Water from there, wow. The ice is a bit, no? So closer to the end, I was ready for water.
Good evening. Go ahead and call the Burlington City Council September 6, 2011 meeting to order. Like to take this opportunity to welcome you here, hopefully you will return. Also like to remind you at this time if you turn off all electronic devices. It's time we call on Councilmember Jim Baller for tonight's invocation.
Let's pray. Father, we come before you this evening with Thanksgiving in our hearts for our many blessings, Father, and we're so very mindful this week before the 9/11 remembrance, Father, that the price of freedom is very expensive. And Father, we pray for each and every family that was involved with it, as we remember those, would please help us keep those in our prayers. And Father, as we think about the storms that passed through and those last week and more recent, the loss of life, Father, please be with those individuals and those with loss of property, please take care of those in a special way. Father, we thank you for our city and the many blessings that you've given to us. We ask that you bless this council, Lord, give us knowledge and wisdom from above so that we may can make the proper decisions in all that we do. We give you the praise, the honor, and glory in your name. Amen.
Amen. This time I'd like to recognize Chief Mike Williams and Chief Jay Smith. And before we recognize these two gentlemen, we'll read a proclamation. Proclamation proclaiming a moment of remembrance on September 11, 2011, in the city of Burlington, where as people across our great nation and the entire globe collectively witnessed an event of immense tragedy, September 11, 2011, when terrorist attacks took the lives of almost 3,000 innocent people on American soil, and whereas the events of that day instantly transformed the lives of Americans throughout personal and unfamiliar sense of individual and national vulnerability, and whereas unprecedented historical nexus of Americans arose from the tragedy unifying the country in an outpouring of national pride, selflessness, generosity, courage, and service, and whereas many first responders and civilians tirelessly and courageously participated in dangerous rescue and recovery efforts, risking or forfeiting their lives for the safety of others, and whereas Sunday, September 11, 2011, will be the 10th anniversary of the 9/11 tragedy. Now therefore, I, Ronnie K. Wall, Mayor of the city of Burlington, do hereby proclaim a moment of remembrance on September 11, 2011, in the city of Burlington. Furthermore, I call our city's police and fire responders, churches and citizens alike to join our nation in sounding sirens and ringing bells for one minute at 1:00 PM on Sunday, September 11, 2011, in honor of those who lost their lives and loved ones 10 years ago on that day. This is the sixth day of September 2011. At this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence to pay tribute to those we lost on 9/11. Thank you. This time I recognize Chief Mike Williams and Chief Jay Smith.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We appreciate you doing the proclamation. It's very important where you see the news stories, everybody was talking about the things that they remembered on that day, and those are the things that come back to everyone's mind as to what they thought about on that day, and it is the 10th anniversary, and it is the time that we go back and remember those sacrifices that people made. And it's a training experience from the fire side, it's also a training experience to learn about preparedness and techniques and learn new things about terrorism and stuff that we weren't exposed to as much previously prior to this. So we try to make a positive learning experience out of that. So thank you for doing the proclamation. The fire department on September 11 with the proclamation that you gave, our intent is to have our apparatus, all that are available, not respond to calls at that time, have them pull out on the front ramps of the fire stations, and then we will be sound, our members will be at parade rest, standing next to the apparatus, and then we'll do the siren for a moment at that time as a remembrance to be part of the ceremony. That's what our intentions are. And then we have other members doing different things in the community, there are different things going on, and we'll have people participate in that. Some of those people will be volunteering and some of the things that we'll have planned. And Mike has some stuff too, I think, that he wanted to tell you about.
Thank you, Chief. Chief Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We're certainly going to take part in this as much as we can. Our plan is to, of course, we'll have police vehicles in front, the police department and in back, hopefully there'll be enough available for that, hopefully it'll be a quiet day. But we also considered how to, how best to have some police vehicles doing this in other parts of the city. And finally, we settled on, since the response on that day 10 years ago was both police and fire together, they responded together, they worked together, and they died together. We're going to put police cars at the fire stations to stand alongside with them. So we'll have cars at our headquarters, police department, we'll have cars, if we were just busy, we can't get anywhere else, we're going to have one at Station 4. But we're also going to try to put police cars at 2, 3, and 5, and just stand shoulder to shoulder with the firefighters during that one minute. There are several other events going on, not only this week but that day. On September 8, there's an event at Baptist Temple on Anthony Road honoring those same first responders. On the 9th, there's a parade of heroes in Elon organized by the Elon Police Department, that would be going to, emergency vehicles going to Elon Elementary, Western Middle School, and AO Elementary. Also on the 9th, there's an event, appreciation ceremony at Grove Park Elementary. Let's see, on the 10th, there's an event at the Court Square of Graham called Let Freedom Ring. And also on Sunday, the 11th, there's an event at Belmont United Methodist Church, an appreciation service at Shallow Presbyterian Church, and another event at West Side Church. It was originally scheduled for the Holly Hill Mall parking lot, but they have since moved that to the West Side Church, and there will be police firing EMS vehicles at those events. So there'll be a lot going on in remembrance of that day, and we're going to participate as much as we can.
Thank you, Chief. Any comments from council? Thanks, gentlemen. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes, August 23, 2011, City Council meeting. Please for the approval of the minutes. Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Puce? Adoption of the agenda?
Motion, we adopt the agenda, it's written.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, puce? Consider agenda, these items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item 1A, to award a contract to Carolina and Environmental Services Incorporated in the amount of $229,901, purchase the side loading garbage truck utilizing the Piggyback General Statue 143-129. B, to award a bid to BB&amp;T in the amount of $1,267,473 for a lease purchase agreement for capital equipment and to authorize the mayor, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, and director of finance and risk management to sign all required documents. C, to appoint Ms. Martha Ann Lisby to serve on the traffic commission to fulfill the term of resigning member. D, to set a date of public hearing for September 20, 2011, to consider the Crenshaw property contiguous voluntary annexation petition. E, to set a date of public hearing for September 20, excuse me, 2011, to receive citizen to comments on the consolidated annual performance and evaluation. F, to adopt the resolution for the flexible spending accounts with EVH for ex-administration authorized the city manager and the director of finance to sign and execute the summary plans. Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, puce? New business, 2, to approve a memorandum of understanding between Alamance County, Guilford County, Chatham County, Orange County, Rockingham County, city of Burlington, city of William, city of Greensboro, the town of Hall River, town of Pittsboro, the town of Sweptonville, and the state of North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources concerning the Hall River Trail corridor. This time we recognize Mr. Tony Lawes. Welcome, Mr. Lawes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be here to mention briefly a little about the Hall River Trail. Some of you that have been on the council for a while will remember that we entered into this memorandum of understanding between these local governments and the state five years ago, and that original agreement is now expired, and we are wanting to extend the memorandum of understanding for additional 10 years. We've made great progress on the Hall River Trail in those five years. The paddle trail, the Blue Way, is in place, all the way through Alamance County now, starting at Alta Quasip, where the river crosses or goes under Highway 87, and then all the way down through, you can see the river as it goes by part of Burlington here, but all the way it goes down through the county, 35 miles, to be exact, to the southern part of the county or southeast portion. In addition, the trail is also a hiking trail. Now, progress is a little slower because we have to work with property owners and such to get that in, but I will say we've made really good progress in the part that we've done, from Indian Valley Golf Course all the way over to Stony Creek Marina, Park and Marina now. That's about five miles, that's the biggest part of the hiking trail that we have in place, and that's a continuous run from Indian Valley through there and gets a lot of use. So that's a little slower in coming, we're working with that, but we've made pretty good progress, and eventually that will be completed, and some of you may remember that it has been designated as the portion through this part of the state for the Mountains of the Sea Trail, which is a hiking trail that goes from Clemens Dome in the mountains to Jacque's Ridge on the coast, and we've been fortunate not to be selected as part of that Mountains of the Sea Trail through this area. So that's in place, and we've made really good progress on this, and it's getting quite a bit of use. We have traffic counters at most of our canoe accesses and areas, not all of them, but where we have parking lots for cars to park, and we're getting about 12,000 uses of all these sites combined a month. So we think that's pretty remarkable. It's gotten a lot of recognition. People are coming from, not only in the local citizens, but out of our city and county to use the trail, and it has helped in the tourism value of our city and county. So what we're asking to do is, if you would approve this memorandum of understanding extension between all of these local governments and the state, five counties and six municipalities, and of course the state is a big part of it too, and the state has provided grants for us to, we've used very little city money, and none of these local governments have had to use a lot of their local resources. We've gotten a lot of grants from the state, from the North Carolina Trails Division, and part of Parking Recreation Trust Fund to help extend these areas all up and down the trail. So we're asking if you would to endorse this project by signing this or approving this memorandum of understanding for an extension of 10 years, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about the trail.
Any questions for Mr. Lawes?
The first agreement was five years?
Five years, yes, sir.
I was thinking the first agreement we did was 10 years.
Well, that's what I was thinking, it was 10 years, but if actually I went back and researched, it's five years.
It is five.
2006 is when we did that one.
Right.
Time flies when you're having fun, I guess I was a little ahead of myself.
Any other questions?
Make a motion that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the North Carolina Department of Environment and Natural Resources and the city of Burlington with those municipal entities listed.
Second.
Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, puce?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Lawes? Item number 3, adopt a resolution making certain findings and determinations authorizing the following of an application with the local government commission, requesting the local government commission to sell bonds at a private sale in connection with your assurance of revenue bonds by the city of Burlington. This time we recognize Ms. Reese, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council, for the opportunity to appear before you tonight. This resolution is just the next step in the process of issuing the 2011 revenue bonds. We need your approval to actually file the application with the LGC, and this resolution does that as well as approve the members of the financing team, and gets us ready into the next step.
Ms. Reese, you may want to tell them specifically what these bonds are for, remind them?
These bonds are for the Lake Jordan mandates to make improvements to the South Burlington and East Burlington wastewater treatment plants. These are mandates that were handed down to us from the state, which we have to make some adjustments to those plants and how they process in order to eliminate the phosphorus and nitrogen that is going into the water supply.
What's the size of this one?
Right now, the engineers have projected about 19 million.
Any other questions for Ms. Reese?
Is that 19 million fairly consistent with what we had anticipated?
At the very beginning, yes. You know, we're hoping that there were a lot of companies that showed up at the pre-bid meeting, so that we're hoping that we'll be able to take advantage of some of the economic times that helped us last time, and we got some very good bids in.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, one thing I need to mention to you, these bids are actually, first ones are in due, I believe, Bob, this Thursday?
Yes, South plan is this Thursday, and East plan is September 20.
One issue that does concern us somewhat is that the first bid process, this is basically renovation work. So we're now in the midst of that, and we've discovered some issues that no one knew were there when you started on the ground, so that's taken a little longer than we anticipated, but I think it's, again, this is really, this is truly renovation work, so it's like renovating your house, there's going to be some issues we run into, that no one knew going in, certainly, I'm not blaming the architects or the engineers in this one, because you couldn't see some of these issues that we're dealing with. And also remember, this work has to be done while the plants are operating, and that's a whole nother challenge that all the contracts are facing. We should get more favorable terms now than I think we originally had thought.
Yes, as well.
Because, I mean, rates are now as low as they've been in probably ever.
And that's another reason that we wanted to take these bonds to the market in October, as opposed to the end of the year. The more closer you get to the end of the year, the more history shows, the more volatile the markets are, they're going up and down.
Any other comments?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution and authorize the city clerk to certify the final copies of that resolution.
Second. Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, puce? Thank you, Ms. Reese. Next titles, excuse me, the next item in the agenda is request communication. Mr. Doug Biddy has requested to address the city council concerning a tree located at 1116 West Davis Street. This time I've recognized Mr. Jeff Parsons to come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I am Jeff Parsons, and one of the hats I wear for the city is I am the staff liaison to the Tree and Appearance Commission, and I've worn that hat since its inception in I guess it would only be fair if I give you a little background, of course you know why we're here, give you a little background on the Tree and Appearance Commission and the process that we went through, and that will explain why we're here now. As you know, the Tree and Appearance Commission was formulated in 1994 and has several tasks that were assigned by council. One of the tasks is to educate the public on the benefits of trees and tree care, formulate planting plans within the city of Burlington, and to preserve trees on public property, including public right-of-way. In order to do this, we have a tree plan, a work plan that we work, that we follow, and there's an application process. If a homeowner or a property owner has a tree on city right-of-way adjacent to their property and wants to have work done to that tree, pruning, some type of maintenance, or even removal, they fill out an application and it's submitted to the Tree and Appearance Commission. It is then reviewed by them, and they do have a vote and a say in what happens to all trees on city property, and that is dictated by our tree ordinance, and I won't get into all the details on that. We had a request by Mr. Doug Biddy in November of 2009 to remove a large tree on West Davis, and I think we have the property up on the screen now. The property is at 1116 West Davis Street. It currently has a swimming pool on the property, but no house. It's one of the few vacant lots on the street. He came to the tree commission, we had a long time to review, looked over the application. It was voted on by the tree commission to sum it up and make it simple, they unanimously turned down the request. So Mr. Biddy does have the right, and it is spelled out in the tree ordinance, that he can come here tonight and ask for a repeal. We're looking at the tree in question, and we have some more photos. The reason he requested the tree to be removed is he wishes to, and this is his words, to build a house on the property, and the tree is in the way of where he would like to have his driveway put in. Unfortunately, at the tree commission meeting, we did not see a house plan or driveway plan, there's been no driveway permit. The tree is the big tree on the right, it's got a ribbon, caution ribbon around it. It's the largest of the last three remaining trees in that block. It is a willow oak tree, a lot of folks call them pin oak tree, but it is a willow oak. It is 14 feet in circumference where that ribbon is, so it is a massive tree. It's 70 feet tall, and it spreads about 70 feet and provides a lot of shade. West Davis has been known for years as one of our tree-lined streets. I would say it has quite a reputation for its beauty, and folks like to drive down, it's a tree-canopied street. We don't have many like that in Burlington, this is one of the few. These trees are approximately 80 years old, we've lost quite a few in past years simply due to old age. You want to switch to, this is a general view of the lot, you can see the building in the background is the poolhouse, it sits a little bit below the, most of the lot. The lot extends from the swale on the left to the right, and to about that point right It was talked about maybe moving the driveway between, there's two existing trees, those two trees are 41 feet apart. Also, in our tree ordinance, roots and infrastructure of the tree are also protected, to put a driveway in between these two trees would very much compromise both trees and could cause their demise. I guess I'm not really here to argue driveway points and things, I'm really here on behalf of the tree commission to preserve the tree. The tree commission felt like, without a plan, without anything to look at, that the east side to the left would be a much better place for a driveway. We have no trees on that location, the tree that is there is on the property itself and does not fall under our tree ordinance. We did a little bit of homework, we had the tree looked at by Mark Daniel Lee, our county extension agent, and he did a hazard evaluation on the tree in question, and he found no significant problems with the tree other than being planted in a small space between a curb and a sidewalk. There's no cavities that could be seen, no diseases, no mushrooms that grow at the base of a tree that tells you that it has rot and decay. He feels pretty good, that the tree is very sound, there's no dieback in the top. We're in the process of having all the trees on West Davis evaluated by a Mr. Guy, mayor, with better tree care, and that is, his business, is a tree evaluation arborist. He is out of the country right now, so as soon as he gets back, we're going to get him on board.
On board to?
Evaluate all the trees on West Davis.
Okay.
Very old enough that we really want to know if there's any potential problems.
Disease?
Disease, right, exactly. I know a little bit about trees, I know a I know a little bit about trees, I know a little bit about a lot of things, but I don't know everything that I would need to know to make that assessment, I'm not trained in that, and he is, um, so we would trust his judgment. We sent out a letter to all the residents when we knew Mr. Biddy was on this, um, agenda, and we received numerous responses, um, I won't go through all the names, I think you probably have a letter from Caroline and Ben Honsbacher, who live a couple houses up. Um, I have had six responses, all of them are in favor of the tree being preserved, I have not had anybody call to say, "Take the tree down." There are probably more that would have liked to have been here, I know several are gonna be out of town, I think we have a resident here tonight to present West Davis Street, but we did have six letters that were opposed to removal of the tree. Do you think, anything else, um, that would need to?
Well, I would just point out that, um, there, you know, you certainly could place a driveway on the east side of the lot, so we, I think-
What's, what's the standard width of a, of a driveway?
Well, typically, it's about ten feet, 'cause people don't wanna spend a lot of money on a driveway, it may flare out a little bit at the curb line, maybe a little wider than that, but-
And the, and the difference between the two trees?
It's forty-one feet.
Forty-one feet?
But ten feet in the middle, you're gonna be very, very, very close, you're gonna cut all the roots on one side of each of those trees.
I'm not sure what the procedure is, in case there's an application process, which you pointed out that there was no, uh, there wasn't a plan for coming regarding the actual movement of the lot, where the, where the proposed home would be, and where the driveway cut would be, is that part of the procedure?
Yeah, it's, um, it's really as much as the applicant wants to bring to the table, I mean, it's up to the applicant to show need for a tree to be removed. I mean, we have had instances, trees have caused problems, we've had trees that have blocked sewer lines with roots and things of that nature, and folks have brought, you know, plumbing bills and things to the table, and they're able to discuss, and they have all the time that they need to discuss their case, and the tree commission makes a decision based on the information they're given. We didn't see any, we didn't see any, any type of plan, just-
Is that, is that procedure is a separate procedure to the driveway, is it?
That's correct, driveway permit's done through engineering department.
Are you evaluating whether or not it's, is kind of conflict with the tree ordinance and, um, what, what we're trying to do as far as the tree ordinance is concerned, is that what's something you would say when determining whether or not to grant a driveway cut, where to locate?
Well, I think engineering would, would take all those things into account, certainly they would need to know about it.
But you said there's not been a request for?
There hasn't been a request for a driveway permit that I know of, I mean, you could imagine, so.
And with that, and that would certainly require a location, a fact, showing the location of the driveway as well as the home?
Correct. We do a site evaluation where the trees are located as well.
I wanna make sure I understand, this, this tree in question is, is on city right-of-way? So it's-
Yes.
I saw the tree with the tape around it, so that's the tree in question, and it's, it's right front of the street.
Right.
So you're saying that even if there was a plan to move forward in reference to a house and a driveway, that it would compromise putting the driveway in between the two trees, so that's not unacceptable in reference to your committee, that's not acceptable either?
No.
Okay.
Let's see, I'll put it here.
Any other questions for Mr. Parsons before we, uh, Mr. Biddy is next to speak?
I've got one.
Okay.
Uh, Jeff, I know when we replace some of the sidewalks there, that, I, I've got one of those trees in my yard, and the roots tend to grow closer to the top of the ground, but do we have a problem when we go in and replace sidewalks with root cuts?
It has been a problem, it has, um, I know of one instance where the roots had grown underneath and, and pushed the sidewalk up, a major root, and this root was cut, the sidewalk was poured, and the tree died, and unfortunately, it was front of, um, Sam Hunt's house, he, he didn't like that very much, but it was a big stately oak, just up the street from this one. The, the roots in, this tree in question are not growing under the sidewalk or the street, they are growing parallel to the sidewalk in the street, so anything you cut, you're gonna cut those parallel roots, so-
How many tree, how long have you been doing this, twenty-seven years?
Yeah, I've been with the city thirty years.
Okay. How many trees have we cut through that neighborhood in the last thirty years?
Probably eighteen.
And they were all due to being diseased?
We had disease, it's, there's never been a driveway or any type of infrastructure, we've lost some in storms, ice storms, Fran took a couple, um, we've lost some because of decay in the actual butt of the tree where it meets the ground. There's a lot of things that can happen to trees when they get that age, and they really need to be monitored, so.
Jeff, explain if they hadn't seen this, the unusual situation here, the distance between the curb and the actual sidewalk where those roots are growing is really a confined space.
It's three feet, there's three feet between the curb and the sidewalk. That's a lot of roots to be able, for a tree to get that big, I'm not sure exactly where they're going, but I know they're not going under the street, 'cause you'll see ripples on the street, I mean, roots start out this big and stay this big for a long time.
It looks like it starts, what I saw the other day, it stopped right there at the curb, it just sort of started moving upward.
Exactly, they're not, they're not past the curb, they're in between the curb and the-
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? I'm sure we'll have some more, Jeff, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Biddy, welcome. If you would state your name and your address for the record, thank you.
I'm Doug Biddy, um, I address the six seventeen Country Club Drive, uh, Mr. Mayor, Council, appreciate you, uh, hearing me tonight. When I purchased this lot, um, it was back in nineteen ninety-nine, um, I was very much involved with the city as a general contractor, I'm a licensed general contractor, have been since nineteen eighty-eight, there was three trees on that, uh, lot at the time, and so I made a phone call, I said, "What'll happen one day when I decide that I wanna build on this lot," I said, "You'll be able to take a tree down, it's okay." You can ask every general contractor in this town which side they'd put a driveway on, you always put the driveway on the high side. This lot is very difficult to work with, this was part of, um, I can't remember the family's name, but the house beside it had a side lot with swimming pool, and so when we purchased it, we sold the house and we kept the lot, knowing one day we'd wanna build on that lot. And, um, it's a unique situation, because there's several houses on Davis Street where there was a side lot, so when you talk about, uh, the fact that trees haven't been taken down for driveways, there's only been one house that I've even think that I recall being built from Willowbrook up, and if you look at the house that's catty-cornered where my lot is, that's a vast improvement over the trees that are in that area. On that side of the street, I grant you, if I could have my choice, I wish the Lord had not taken the tree down, that he took it down, I wish that that big tree was on the left side of the lot, but it's not, it's on the right side of the lot. The tree in the center is, is a sick tree, that tree won't make it another few years, I guarantee if this gentleman comes through and looks at the trees, that center tree's going down. So what that means is there's three trees on the left side from Willowbrook up to Hatcock, there's only three willows left, so this canopy that everybody's talking about is starting to disappear anyway, and it's just a matter of time until that tree is, that might be the strongest tree in the area, but it's, it's on the shorter end of its life, I don't think the thing's gonna live there another forty, fifty years, and we've seen what has happened in ice storms, we've seen what's happened in, in, uh, rainstorms, uh, these types of situations are out of our control, but I guarantee if I put a house on there, it's gonna look better landscaped than the, the way that lot looks right now. Now, the other thing is, the reason I didn't bring a plan, I wasn't asked to bring a house plan, a house plan I've already inquired about to have drawn is four thousand dollars, so if, I'm not gonna go invest four thousand dollars, take a house plan to the, the tree committee and say, "Hey, this is what I wanna do with my house," and I was told at that meeting that I could bring the driveway in between the two trees, and I, that, to me, that isn't a good answer, and I brought a couple pictures of my own, uh, because if you come out of a lot, the tree would block your vision, uh, this is the tree root line, and the huge side walk there probably not even two feet in that area, this is what I would have to face coming in and out each time I would drive in and out of that driveway, and you can also see, at some point, when that street was put in, you've got the, the right-of-way from that island sets up naturally to drive into the driveway at that point. That is the safest spot, both for cars entering and leaving the driveway, so you're, you're taking safety into effect too, when you're talking about taking out that tree, and, um, so those are the things I look at, the other thing is, where that pool is located gives me a lot of difficulty in how far back I can go with the lot, I can't get but so close to that, uh, pool because of the, the foundation footings that you have to put in, and for every, uh, foot that you have a rise in the, in the ground, you have to come out two, a foot, uh, I'm sorry, two feet for steps, so, let's say I've got a twenty-four by twenty-four garage, if I flip this and put it on the side that they want me to put it on, I have six or seven steps in my garage, and, you know, I'm not getting any younger, uh, I wanna have a, a garage where I just walk from the garage just basically into the house, if I set it on the right side, I've got a two-foot fall from right to left, it just makes better sense, and it, it accommodates me with the house that, you know, I'm gonna live in, and, and I'm gonna have family and friends over, and I just think, in, in the long haul, that's a lot more important than, than this tree, and, you know, granted, I like trees, uh, but I, look at Meven Street, if, if we'd have saved every tree on Meven Street versus, you know, making progress on Meven Street, where would we be today? So, this, to me, this is just part of progress, um, and that's really all I've got to say about the situation, but I, I would bring any other plans that anybody'd wanna see, like a sketch or something, but, you know, to have a full-blown plan before I know that I can do this, that would be, uh, the wrong way to go, I think.
Any questions for Mr. Biddy?
If I just ask you to put yourself in my shoes, if you bought a lot and you wanted to put a house there, I think you'd, you'd say, "Hey, I'd like to put the house there, I'd like to put there," and, and it won't be a bad house.
This, this lot being located there, it was developed in conjunction with being owned by the center side?
Yes, sir.
It continued to be subdivided?
That's right.
And, and that's, that's what your situation is, it was, uh, the great, it was great building, so who was that for, was that Ms. Sellers or?
One of them, Clayburn was her.
Clayburn, I think it was, when they built that house, they, years back, this pool was, and this lot was to accompany that, to that house, I don't think it was ever anticipated that it would be, so, uh-
Well, the other thing I'm trying not to do too is put a front-loading garage on it, because there's no front-loading garages on that street, so I wanted to have a side-entry garage, and it, it just allows me to do that, you know, in a better fashion if I can come up that right side, taking into account the steps and everything that would go into the garage.
What makes you think, Mr. Biddy, that one tree is diseased?
Oh, I don't think that tree is diseased, I say the center one, I think the center one is, but I'm just saying, you know, so we'll probably lose the center one in the next few years.
Right.
So, my point is, is we'll lose several more trees along this street, and, and, you know, I know that, I love that street, I think it's a beautiful street, and I've had family and friends coming, they go, "Oh, my gosh, this is the most beautiful street," but it's lost a lot of that canopy look, and the city hadn't replaced any tree, it's, it's just as barren as it can be in there where all the trees have died, so it, it, you know, I don't understand that.
Any other questions? You have a questions for Mr. Parsons?
I've got one. Uh, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Biddy.
Appreciate it.
Question he just, or statement he just made, why are we not replacing trees as they die out?
We have replaced a few, um, we sent out a letter when we, we first contacted the tree evaluation gentleman with Mr. Guy Mayor, and we wanted the folks to know on West Davis that we were gonna have the trees evaluated. He came and made a cursory look, and he had about three or four citizens come out and question, 'cause they were afraid that their tree was gonna be taken out. We have not replaced because we don't have a formal plan as to how we're going to re-tree West Davis. It's gonna take a little time and effort and thinking, it's gonna take a tree evaluation expert to tell us what we should save and what needs to go, we need to find the appropriate tree for that location to give us what we want without having the problems that a willow oak tree has, that's obviously not the right tree for that place. Years ago, um, they looked great when they were young, and they look great now, but we know a little more now than we did years ago, and there are better trees to plant in that location. We have tried several zelkovas, they seem to be doing really well, they're a fast grower, they have good fall color, um, there's one on the corner of Eden and West Davis in front of the Honsbacher's house, and then there's a couple across the street. We have not gone in wholesale planting, because we really wanna have a plan in place before we do that, and it will not be long, it's gonna go hand-in-hand with this evaluation that we come up with that, and we will bring that to you all before we do anything for approval.
What's the timeline for this gentleman to, to go out and evaluate?
Um, he's supposed to be back in the country first part of October, and we'll get him on board, he already knows that he's going to do this, it's, it's not a long process, there's some formal, um, reports that he would do and submit, and, um, hopefully by mid to end October, we'll have all that in hand.
So, what I hear you saying is, once this guy evaluates all these trees, then you're gonna put a formal plan into place to replace trees on Davis, which, up to this point, we have not done.
We have not done wholesale, we've tried several, um, there are at least two, maybe three that we've put in, um, we're evaluating those to see if there's any problems with sidewalks or curbs, um, they seem to, they seem to do well at this point, um, trees like anything else take time to prove out, and we're being, we're citing on, we're being cautious about what we do rather than going in and, and, and making mistakes and then having to fix that, so when we do it, we're gonna do it the right way.
I just hope that the, it, some of the trees that are diseased that are there, that may have to come down. I guess we'll get input from the neighborhood, or we'll make the decision ourselves, the city will, on what goes back.
We had talked about that, and once we have his plan in place for what would stay and what he sees as a hazard and needs to be removed, we would invite all the residents to come, and we would have a meeting and talk about that, and let everybody be on board, and, um, tell them all at the same time what we found. We feel like these trees not only belong to the property owner that they're in front of that house, but really belong to all the people of Burlington, um, we want all the folks in that neighborhood to have some input and say in, in what happens, and, um, we feel very strongly we keep them informed, and we would invite their input on anything that we do on the street, um, we want it to be a, a very transparent and open process.
Mr. Parsons, liability will also be a consideration there in terms of, of, um, the future of the trees, and if you recall, I think it was last year, we had a, a storm in the lower part of West Davis near Willowbrook, where we had a large limb to come down, thank goodness, and there was no car, uh, in that process, and that, that'll be a big part of this, uh, in terms of what, this won't be an easy decision, because nobody wants to cut the trees down.
Yeah.
But certainly liability would have been an issue.
State earlier, we stated earlier that, uh, Mr. Biddy came before the commission in two thousand nine, is that what you said?
Yes, November.
And there was no house plan then, or what was the presentation? Just if he wanted to move, move the tree?
Wanted the tree removed so he could build a house and have the driveway on that, on the right side, and he explained what he explained here tonight, and the, the commission acted on the, the information that was given, and, I mean, they are in the tree preservation business, and-
I'm just curious, um, in reference to this gentleman that's coming back in the country in October, he's gonna make a, a walk-through and, and decide what's diseased, what's not, what's gotta come down, I mean, at, at some point in time, if this gentleman makes a decision that four trees are diseased, we're gonna cut them down?
There's an evaluation and actually a numerical score given, and if it reaches a certain level- And if it reaches a certain level of hazard, we don't have a choice.
Okay. So it's not a matter of, of this gentleman making a call by himself?
Right. Now, if, if that word is given that it's hazardous, then it's, it's going to be down.
But, you know, Harold made a good point. If we reason, if we know or reasonably should know that a, that a tree poses a liability, then we have a greater responsibility, um, because of, because of that. So I think that, um, it's like anything else, once you know there's a liability, then you've got a greater responsibility to enact on that, that standpoint pretty quick. Um, is there a reason we're using this, this gentleman? We're waiting on him? I mean, is...
He's been recommended by Mark, Mark Daniely. Mark Daniely is a certified harvest. And he has worked with this gentleman. He's worked in a lot of municipalities here in the central portion of North Carolina. His primary function of his business is tree evaluation. He does tree work himself, but he is a tree evaluator. And there's not too many people in that business.
I can imagine.
Right. They're, they have a liability themselves.
Once again, what's the procedure? Make an application and get turned down?
You know, in, in the law business, you have a certain period of time within this, uh, appeal. Literally, you use the term repeal.
Right.
Uh, is the request here to repeal something the city council did a previous time?
I think the request is to, I don't know whether, I don't know what you would call overturn.
Is, is it a procedure?
You go to the city council?
Yes, in the ordinance, um, we do have that process.
It's, it's going to be similar to what you see with the, the traffic commission where if the commission, uh, makes a decision, the, um, petitioner has the right to appeal to council for the final authority.
Or even P and Z. He just came back.
We do not have that. We have never had one. I'm sorry to interrupt.
But he, Mr. Huffman said 2009. Didn't Mr. Biddy appear recently before the tree commission though also?
No, he did not appear before the tree commission. He came in and to talk to me about that he was coming to you all.
My wife has been in the hospital for the last six months four times. She is in very, very ill health. And that has slowed this process down considerably. And, um, so I've had a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel on some of her health issues. And that would be one of the reasons I was going to speed this back up. Interest rates are real nice right now.
Um, if you would grant me, I'll read you section 36.5 dash 28, review by city council. The city council shall have the right to review the conduct, acts, and decisions of the tree advisory committee. Any person may appeal any ruling or order by the city tree advisory committee to the council, which may hear the matter and make the final decision. So I guess what it boils down to is Mr. Biddy is asking you to make a final decision on the tree.
Well, last statement I will make in reference to the gentleman, um, that's coming back into the country in October. What happens if we make a decision tonight and then, uh, let's say that we deny the request? The gentleman comes in and says that, uh, it's diseased. What happens? What's the process?
Well, the tree would, the tree would come down.
I understand that. Does, but he's been denied the request. Does he have to wait?
Right now, we don't have a process.
Is there a period of time in which you cannot bring this request back?
This is much... I look to God because I have the same concern you've voiced about there should have been some period of time within which an appeal was taken. But there isn't a solid answer to that.
So that we cover the last one for a reasonable period of time?
I would say a reasonable period of time.
In this situation, things have changed. Quite frankly, I, I would think that it's time to start the process over. And it might be in Mr. Biddy's best interest to, uh, do one of two things, or do both things. And that is wait until the city comes back with this because it may be, you have an ally in that gentleman. Number two is, is that I think if you're going to propose that tree be cut down, I think you would need to come up with at least some sort of, of, not a formal necessarily $4,000 schedule, whatever, but something to, to give those folks on the tree commission. We, we charge them with a pretty hefty responsibility. And at the same time, and that is to preserve and beautify the city. And, you know, it used to be that wasn't really a, a very, very high lofty goal for our, but we recognize that's different now. And, uh, I, I, I think I really would, would like to see what we get back from this phone to give you a fair, a fair shake. And I'm not too sure that, uh, the appeal that we had here before us is not untimely. It would be two years. I throw that out to you.
All I can do is address you and just say that there's been personal situations in my family. And, and, you know, there's time for you to do things. And that lot's been sitting there on it for, since 1999.
Not far from you.
I understand. And, and at some point, you know, I plan on building a house. I think the thing that I, I find the most difficult in this whole scenario though is, is that, you know, I've got a lot that I'm going to put a nice house on. And this isn't an historic, uh, area, which I used to live in. And I, I never want to get back in there because I, I just didn't want people telling me how to build my house, what they want it to look like. Because you know what? Once I live in that house, nobody's going to care. You know, I'm the one that's living in it. I'm the one that goes out there and rakes those leaves. I haven't had anybody come help me rake any of the leaves from those trees. I do it every year. And, and, you know, I think that's what we should do. I'm just saying, once you own your house, you kind of feel like that's your house and you'd like to do it the way you'd want it done. And, you know, that's all I asked for was just, you know, would this committee respect that? That I'd like to do this in a certain way? And, and I, and I thought the committee was very fine. They were, they were great. I was surprised it was unanimous decision, but then, you know, that kind of made me feel like when I looked at that, you are looking at the beautification committee. So they're only going to look at it from their, their angle. And, and, and the most important thing to them is to keep those trees up. And, you know, I ask y'all to go back down Davis Street sometime and look at the house that is catty-cornered to my house. There's a brand-new house there. And tell me if that's what an attractive addition to that street versus the lot that was there. And I think that if you can look past that tree, you can say, hey, if there's another really nice house here, that's going to be a lot better. Tax base is going to be better. I may not build there if it goes on the left side, to be honest with you. Um, I, I just, there's just too many quirky things with that lot to try to work out without having a cotton-picking garage that's got six or seven steps in it, you know? Uh, and, and then like I say, I promise you, and now I can see that I'd get turned down on coming in between it. I was told that I could come in between those two trees, uh, when, when we finished that meeting. He said, well, if you want to come between the two trees, you can do that. I was like, well, that doesn't make good sense because we might kill both of them.
Kill both, huh.
This committee, when I talked to them, it was a verbal that I could go in between those two trees. And at that point in the game, that's what I was doing. I was drawing up plans, you know, I was getting, working with a, a home designer.
But might as well. It's just not the lighter that you, that you want to draw your appeal and start over the process.
Okay, we'll do that. Okay.
Do you give your time here?
We allow this meeting to draw this appeal.
Okay, so then I can reapply to this commission. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
You have a motion?
Second.
Got a second. All the members say aye? Aye, pose.
Thank you. That brings us to, uh, public comment period. And we have one, uh, Mr. Larry Hawkins. Uh, Mr. Hawkins would like to talk about the junk car ordinance. Welcome, Mr. Hawkins.
Thanks so much. Mayor, of all due respect, uh, Ms. Haley told me I could dress, you know, appropriately, you know, that I feel inappropriate as far as wearing the shorts. No disrespect to you. I'd like to commend James Butler on the prayer that we had before the meeting. I appreciate that. I'd like to mention this junk car ordinance. Um, I feel as though that it's unfair at large because I live in East Burlington. East Burlington, as we know, is the area where Burlington Industries is the beginning of this town. Now, in my neighborhood, many of my neighbors have junk cars, but I don't consider them junk. Got a neighbor's got a 1964. Got one neighbor's got a 1953. Um, got other neighbors that have some classic cars. I've got a 1966 Cutlass Oldsmobile. I don't consider that junk. On the other hand, though, I understand that the amendment that you did was in relationship to the abandoned cars. It concerns me that the abandoned cars should have been, be state statute. And common sense would tell any one of us, if we have an abandoned car, I'm going to call the state police, they're going to remove that car. So it concerns me why we take the abandonment issue and then we wrap it up into junk cars. Now, it also disturbs me that this was brought to my attention in talking to you, that you all been talking about this for two years. Now, for the longest, we've had move your cars to the back of the yard, which I've done. My constituents did the same thing. Another thing concerns me in this amendment that you did, you caused fiscal hardship to my people, my constituents as well as me, saying that I have to build a building. The building would cost more than the car. It put an extreme hardship on me and my people in my community. But on the other hand, in lieu of this, my concerns, I find that the illegal aliens, the Mexicans, on Kate's Avenue and Wichita Avenue, there's a gentleman there that says 10 cars. Nothing's been done. And it concerns me in our community, in the city of Burlington, Alamance County, State of North Carolina, United States of America, that the illegal aliens are putting fear into our council members, into you, Mayor, to present about search ordinances that are cosmetic in nature, but they do not cover the real problem. Now, I don't want to get too vague, but we know we all need jobs. Our fellow governments failed us. But I'm going to say this much to each and every member in this council, that you, you, Mayor, you, Councilman Butler, you are the safety net for the people of North Carolina. You and every council member, whether it's county, city, in the state of North Carolina, Ohio, Pennsylvania, areas regardless, our people are hurting and they're hurting deeply. And I ask that you make amendments to this ordinance that we cover our cars up and we work with you to bring about the aesthetic value to this city. But at the same time, I ask for you to use some common sense in your rulings. Give an example. Give you an example, Mr. Butler, if you has had a chance to buy a parts car for a BMW, we all know these cars cost between $32 and $50,000. If you could buy that car for $6,000, sir, do you think I would hold it harm against you and say that that is junk? Certainly not. We must use common sense in our rulings. At the same time, we shouldn't allow any favoritism regardless of race or any other issue, whether it's an illegal alien or whatever. So I'm asking the city of Burlington, Alamance County, State of North Carolina, to work on these issues and address the problems that are hurting our people. We are hurting and it's not going to go away. And I'm going to ask this, I'm agreeing to politics, but I'm going to ask this, why can't we have an ordinance that would present to the Mexicans, the illegal aliens, or whatever they are, whether they're legal or not? When you go buy a house and you've got two or three families living in one house, that is if it's an issue of sexual abuse and male abuse for those children. We need to look at the issues at large. These problems are not going to go away. And we need to work within our communities, to work with the Mexicans, to let them know that we don't need any more illegals. We need to work with illegals that are here and send a message to them that if we don't stop this behavior of illegals coming here, we are no longer going to have the country that they wish to come to. It is going to be as corrupt and much bloodshed that is in, it's right now in Mexico. We know the killings on the border in Texas, in Arizona. And I've been told in Atlanta, Georgia, the death is coming right there to them. The mobs are there.
Please be of one minute, sir.
You've got one minute.
One minute.
But in conclusion, I am deeply concerned. I close my statement. And again, I apologize for my dress.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. That brings us to the council comments.
Honorable Mayor and distinguished members of the city council, I want to thank you for allowing me to speak. I have put together some papers, I think, but I am going to leave and will, uh, appear some other time at another meeting. But I do appreciate it. And, um, uh, I left some things for you. And I will say, I, some things I did not write because they are sensitive matters. And, um, I'm a polite person. I'd rather not. But I do, do thank you in, uh, being, being here in the meeting and I appreciate it. And I will keep up with, uh, your next meeting and when I, uh, may speak again.
Thank you very much for being here, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. That brings us to...
I'm sorry. I've returned to the old, uh, chair. It presents to them a question very much.
Thank you. Have a good evening, ma'am.
Thank you.
That brings us to the city council comments. Comments from council?
Uh, Mayor, I just want to kind of bring the council up to date on, on the meeting that Councilman Fawcett and I had last week with, um, staff and a couple of members of the Elon Board in reference to the line of agreement. Basically, the, uh, the meeting went on for about an hour with a lot of discussion and talk, uh, presentations by some staff members. Um, and, and it was agree or it was, uh, it was decided that in view of, um, the recent annexation laws, um, a lot of the environmental issues, uh, in particular along lines of water and, and sewer, uh, water and sewer allocations, uh, future growth of water and sewer lines and the fact that it's going to be difficult for anybody to grow, um, we decided to step back and let staff do more of an evaluation as to the, uh, both the necessity and, um, uh, the likelihood of, of utilities in some of the areas in question. And, uh, and decided really to, to, to get more of a detail as to, rather than just rubber stamping some agreement, but to get some detail as to the lay of the land, uh, what the environmental issues and some of the new annexation laws are going to do to some of, of the area in question. And, uh, kind of come back with more of a, uh, a little more serious evaluation of who can provide utilities to the area, uh, under what circumstances, at what cost, and is it even feasible? So, uh, that's kind of an ongoing process that, uh, that's probably going to take a little bit of time. Anything you want to add?
No, not to that. But I, I do want to say that, uh, I attended the, you know, we had the ASA tournament here this weekend and I attended the two days, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. And, uh, it was, it was enjoyable. And the comments that I received from the, the visitors that were here with the teams, you know, it was a great place to be. And, uh, I think that we have one of the best park and rec staff around on the jobs that we do on our fields and everything that we, uh, presented out there. I think Burlington is a softball capital of the, of the state. We can say the state right now, but I guess that's all, you owe all that to, to Mr. Laws and his staff. But it was a great job that they did and I think the visitors really enjoyed it. And I hope they come back, uh, back next year, right?
Yes, sir.
One more year. Okay. But I have still got the parking rights. Thank you.
I hate to tell you this, Mr. Fawcett, but I was a part of that staff many years ago dragging those wheels over the weekends. As a matter of fact, the city of Burlington still owes me some time for overtime, uh, many years ago, about 19...
We got your check for you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, it was about 1978. Mr. Laws?
We've got a permanent freeze on your...
I was in 15 cents.
But Mr. Laws, the, the red truck took care of that time, right?
We'll go there next. We don't need to talk about that.
Okay. Mr. Davidson fired me.
You know, on a...
The man had good judgment.
On a similar note, I was out of town and bumped into an individual that asked me why I was from. And we got talking about, uh, Burlington. And I'm, I'm sure I'm going to get the acronym wrong, but the BMX race that we had out here, this gentleman was a, he was affiliated with the ABA, I believe it was, and I may have that, that wrong. But anyway...
That's right.
His comments were that they received more support from our municipality and certainly our recreation parks than any place they had been. And he made a comment to point that out to me. And, um, and I'm going to tell you what, I was very proud, he, he, even the volunteers And, um, and I'm going to tell you what, I was very proud, he, he, even the volunteers that were out there and some of the, uh, team members that are local that assisted with various things, he cited specific events, and, um, uh, that's, that's pretty neat to, to be exposed to comments like that, whether you're, certainly if you're in business, you want to hear that in your organization, and if you're in, in the city, you need to hear it as well. So, uh, I think it's important that you guys hear that. And with regards to ordinance issues, I know this council takes very serious any ordinance that it adopts or amends, and, uh, certainly our ordinance is for the most part a complaint-driven, and if there's complaints, it does not matter who the person that breaks the ordinance is or is not. Uh, if it is a, a broken ordinance, then we've got a, a complaint-driven system where we can make amends to that, and all citizens should be encouraged to utilize those resources. And if there are those that you believe are egregious and violate those ordinances, please contact our city staff, and we'll make amends to that regardless of the individual, and that's in, uh, to, to justify, uh, and protect the rights of all citizens.
May I have your statement in regard to that?
Just, yes, come forward.
In regard to the complaint-driven ordinance, what concerns me again on this issue is the state, well, the city says uses anonymous ruling. Now, there are people that can abuse that anonymous ruling, and I'm, I'm, I'm not really going to buy that for the citizen's sake. Now, for example, now you know as well as I know, I've been, had issues with Jerry Johnson, my neighbor, for over probably 30 years, we all know that. Mr. Bates knows it, of course, the whole department knows it, and that issue, uh, is, is repugnant and ridiculous, but what my suggestion to solve this problem is the anonymous rule should be laid aside, and the people, if they're going to step to the issue, should leave their name and their number. Now, if they keep calling, and you all have to go out, and it's a trivialist thing, if it's one piece of wood or two pieces of wood, and he knows that I'm, I'm junky, I'm a junky person, but I, I meet the rule the best I can because I suffer depression, a lot of people do, it's a disease and disorder, I can't help myself, I do the best I can with it. So my suggestion to solve this problem for the state, for the taxpayers of the city of Burlington, is what would solve the problem is if you call in, you got to leave your name. If you don't leave your name, you're not man enough to the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Next, um...
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more thing?
Yes, sir.
I want to thank Chief Smith and, and, uh, EMTs from his department, we don't do all the games that lie, or, or City Park and Greenwood, and that's invaluable. We had some people, the players, that needed some help, and, uh, and the EMTs being there on the spot were, were great, so. Chief Smith, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief Smith. Neighborhood meetings, the, the calendar's been established. September 15th will be First Baptist Church on Apple Street. September 22nd will be Fairchild Community Center, Grand Hookdale Road. September 29th will be the Trinity Worship Center on South Church Street. October 6th, 6th will be the Village at Brookwood, the gathering place. That'd give us one, two, three, four, uh, neighborhood meetings. All meetings will be on Thursday evening, 7:00 PM will be the start time, and they will be, um, Mr. Terry, they will be announced, so I'm thinking that all the council would like to be there as well, so be published.
Yes, I've done that.
Public, okay. Um, Carousel Festival Saturday, uh, yeah, Saturday and Sunday, September 17th and 18th at the city park. Any other comments from council? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn.
A motion.